...today.
Really?
Cut your mics off, please.
I'll see him out letting Jared run the meeting. Kind of get us on point.
Oh, yeah.
We can start on time.
You mind stepping over?
We start on time, then.
We're five minutes late, man.
Trying. Thank you everybody for coming today. It's been brought to my attention that I've been running meetings a little long, so I'm trying my best to step things up. Would you have an invitation, please?
Father, we want to start this meeting by acknowledging your presence here with us today. Father, we want to thank you in many ways that you bless us consistently, constantly. Father, we don't deserve those blessings, Lord. With recent events, we know how important it is that you provide the safety that we desire, Lord, that you provide the protection that we need. But, Father, we want to thank you for giving us men and women of law enforcement to guard us, protect us, and use the skills that you've given them, Father, to sacrifice if they may to keep us safe so that we can exercise the freedom to participate in our government. Thank you, Lord, for that blessing and help us never take your brand in Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, first up, we have public comment recognition is Mr. Ken McRae.
Good methodist back there in the back row, huh?
My share. Please come forward, Will. Gentlemen, it's a real privilege and an honor and honesty as someone who knows Ken. It's an honor for this board. It's an honor for this...I gotta give you directions too, though, if you know what's going on. You say things many times. But it really is a privilege to come in and congratulate Ken McRae on the occasion of his retirement. And we want to take this opportunity to formally recognize you for the work that you've done. I know this is not your bag, it's not what you like, you don't like to be singled out, Ken, but we're gonna do it anyway because it is deserving. And so I'm gonna read this proclamation that's been signed by the board. It says that whereas Rankin County Sheriff Ken McRae is a 28-year law enforcement veteran in Rankin County and has announced his decision to retire at the county in 2016, and whereas over the course of his 28 years of law enforcement, Ken McRae rose through the ranks by serving as a detention officer, a deputy sheriff, an investigator, a DEA task force agent, the chief of police for the city of Brandon, and he currently serves as the Rankin County Sheriff. Whereas Ken McRae has made a significant impact on the lives of hundreds, if not thousands, of Rankin County citizens throughout his law enforcement career by employing a unique blend of leadership ability, common sense, know-how, and humor. We all recognize that. And Ken will be missed by the employees and the staff of Rankin County Sheriff's Office as well as his peers in law enforcement, who have grown to appreciate his professionalism, his camaraderie, his wisdom, and his resolve while serving in a difficult and demanding role. Now, therefore, it's resolved that the board supervisors of Rankin County does hereby commend and congratulate Rankin County Sheriff Ken McRae on the occasion of his retirement and for his tireless dedication to seeking protection of citizens of Rankin County. On behalf of the citizen of Rankin County, we extend to Ken and his family our heartfelt congratulations on this noteworthy transition, and we wish for Ken and his family many happy and relaxing days of retirement in the future. That's resolved today, June 13, 2016, is signed by the supervisors and by the Chairman, Clark Kent. Congratulations.
Does that mean you're off the team or not?
No. For 90 days.
For 90 days?
That's a hell of a comment.
You're welcome, too.
We're not through yet. We have one other item of congratulatory we need to hand out to Ms. Hope Phillips. Tabitha Hope Phillips.
You read it, I'll stand with you. You did such a great job.
This is Tabitha Hope Phillips, and we have with us today a certificate of recognition that is presented to Tabitha for being the 2016 recipient of the Mississippi Public Employees' Workers' Compensation Trust Scholarship, which is awarded by the Mississippi Association of Supervisors and by the Rankin County Board of Supervisors. And this certificate acknowledges her receipt of a scholarship in the amount of $500 to help her with her schooling. Tabitha, congratulations. It's a well-earned and respected honor, okay? We're so proud of you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You got a good mama out there. Next on our agenda, we have old business to have managed to approve.
Motion.
Sorry, Jared.
That's right.
He tried.
Rages for over.
Tried.
I overlooked you on the agenda here. That's what I know.
Hey, y'all know Hayden and Wayne with the Sheriff's Office, what it is, we just want to come and let you know, on behalf of LawFit, we want to present you this plaque, and it's an appreciation to the board supervisors for your support on the LawFit challenge. You know, we had this last weekend.
Right.
Y'all's amazing turnout, we had about 150 competitors and their families, it was a big financial impact, and you couldn't ride through Pearl over there and not see a police car in the state. There were people as far away from Vermont, just all over the United States, and they bragged and bragged on hospitality, not only in Mississippi, but Rankin County, because they've always had it up north in Mississippi. But they've already decided that they're gonna have it in here in Pearl next year.
Good deal.
Which is huge for us and everything, but on behalf of LawFit and all the guys at the Sheriff's Office, I want to thank y'all for supporting this.
Right.
I think you should. We didn't win first place or anything, but we could...
You wanna take a picture with it? Here, let's all take a picture with each other. All right. Good job.
We got one good, not all them.
You don't want to keep it over to Gerald?
I'll take it. I know what to do. That's one thing that they did say, is that the people are amazed across the United States.
Congratulations, Ben.
How much the public here is supporting LawFit and love it.
I'm wondering if that would change. Seventeen years.
Well, I guess. Put it long enough. Get it long enough.
I know, just we got a hall out there, it'd be a good spot for it.
I'll take it home. But we had a 12-person team, and we said we probably had to do longer than that, but I'll be proud, knowing y'all had the only two elected officials that all along, myself and Michael Gaines, when our team both of us competed in it.
Didn't Michael get a reward, too?
Yes, Michael got the Mike Walter award.
Did y'all finish, sir?
I didn't win any trophy now. They did, you know, we got some in shape guys over there, and I tell you, it's a part...to me, it helps improve the end of the long.
Oh, sorry.
Heck, yeah. Well, if we're gonna host it again next year, it means we need to win it next year, right?
You gonna start training now?
I would be with a 5-man team right now.
I'm willing to write a check for somebody to train.
But thank y'all very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Craig, just over there, please don't pick me.
John, I give you enough time. I give you enough time to whip and shake.
We gotta wait there.
The one you want to be in?
Here you go, Steve.
Thank you, son. Got a motion on the table?
Okay. We have a motion on the table for...
Old business.
Old business.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. In the agenda?
Yeah, I was asking to remove one item on there.
Nope. We can't do it.
It's already been removed.
So we can't do it.
Better when Jared's in charge.
All right. So is it later in our agenda?
Nope, it's not even...
Oh, it's done, period. All right, okay.
Most approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. Sullivan.
The usual petition to change the assessment, 2015 real and personal property assessment.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. Parker. I mean, Ms. Erin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting approval of two copier contracts with the Sheriff's Department, the jail supervisor's office, and just the training center, it should be on there with Rico Incorporated.
So, Ben.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morris. Second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Parker. I meant you first, so you can get started that way.
Seriously, as a matter of fact. Thank you, I have two items on the agenda. The first one is our LSRP 61-4, which is the overlay project that we use in our LSBP money as far. If you recall, we had two overlay projects. We had what I refer to as the big one, the SAP project. State aid has signed off on that program, and we've started in design on that now. This one, they say, based on their figures, that there's a possibility that an additional $60,000 would be needed to overlay these three roads. So they have requested, which the board has done in the past, just a board order saying, if these funds are needed, then the county would provide those funds. They're not asking for a check now or anything, but it's a board order saying, when the bids are taken and they're ready to let the contract, that if additional funds are needed, then Rankin County would provide those funds.
What was the...okay, what...what would be the, I guess, initial amount that we're looking at?
Which one of three roads, Sheriff's Districts, should we cut?
And that's where you could cut one of the roads if you want to. Anyway.
No, I'm saying, I mean, how many...how much money are we talking about, and then we're gonna...
$60,000.
I know, but I mean, what's the...what is the fund that we're...we're LSRP fund now?
It's about, well, actually, they've given us the wrong numbers, the reason this come up, but there's about $424,000 in the LSRP fund at the present time.
That's what I was getting at, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so $60,000 to match, to get 400 and something, and if we need to ante up $60,000, that's pretty good.
Oh, yeah, you'd come out ahead, regardless, if you...if you...when you can get a road, one of these roads, whatever done, for $60,000, look, you way ahead of the game, no question about that.
The way you say, so we need to make a motion to, now, to...
Yes, approve a board order, because I'd like to get the board order signed by the President today and get it to state aid, and once they get that in hand, then they will approve our state aid program on the LSRP project.
I'll make that motion.
Just a hypothetical, what if we were to pull one road, would that not make it...
You could pull...you could pull a road, sure, there's three roads involved, you could pull a road.
I mean, then we wouldn't be in the need of having to write a check at all.
That's correct.
No, we wouldn't be getting...
That's correct.
Getting this done. I mean, half a million for six...
Yeah, you would end up with a road that...
We'd lose all of the 400,000 if we pull a road?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Would we lose the whole basket if we pull a road?
No, sir. You can revise the program. The downside to that is, is these three roads need some overlay on them, and you're not gonna get it this cheap any other way, even through the county contract.
There's a motion on the table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Morris to approve, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. The second item that I have on the agenda, I'm gonna recommend that it be tabled until the next meeting. It pertains to development out at the intersection of Old Fannin Road and Spillway Road. It's a request to file a plat out there, and looking at it, and of course, it's in Mr. Bishop's district, and he's not had a chance to look at it, and the plat that I have doesn't look exactly like what's on the ground out there. Now, the reservoir did get some borings taken on the main street through there, and there's adequate asphalt, those places, a couple places right at 10 inches asphalt. But just the way the plat is done, and there's a couple little future streets, and when I took the plat out there and tried to follow it, and I'm old and so forth, I was having a little problem making it all fit together, so we're just requesting that you table that till the next meeting.
So, move.
Okay. Do we need action to the...I guess so. Motion by Mr. Morris to table this, second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slade.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
First item under my section is to set a public hearing for June 30, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. for Timothy Jones' nuisance properties, District 4, 102 Oakdale Circle. Just need a motion. Motion to set.
Set. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item B is the public hearing for Clifton Rogers Jr., conditional use permit, 252 Clover Valley, District 4. Clifton Rogers Jr. is seeking a conditional use permit to operate his tree service business on the property at 252 Clover Valley Boulevard. There is an existing shop building on the property. He plans to park equipment and six trucks on the property. He will also service the trucks there at this location. Mr. Rogers owns three parcels of land that totals 295 acres. Property is currently zoned RE1. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to Mr. Ro...we'll open the public hearing, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to Mr. Rogers' conditional use permit at 252 Clover Valley Boulevard. Anyone speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter at this time, and it'd be appropriate to close the hearing, and it'd be appropriate to take action.
Renee, I have a question. Where on the property, on the 250 acres, is the shop and the trucks going to be housed? And I kind of have an idea about where, I've seen enough pictures of the property that, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is there enough barrier, or a green barrier in between that and that development that's gonna be across the road once they get it built?
Is this the appropriate time to be setting criteria? Conditional uses and all that?
We haven't even recommended on the Clover Valley piece. We got some on the next item.
On the next agenda.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm good.
All right.
You making a motion or... I make a motion, then we...
We close club, or we close?
Yeah, we've already closed. Yes, sir. It's appropriate to take action.
The motion by Mr. Gaines to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion?
Are we gonna...I mean, what are the conditions?
That's coming next.
I think that's been the next parcel, I think there are...
Yeah, it's the next. There's not any conditions on the 252 Clover Valley that goes with this particular request. There's not any conditions on that one.
Well, I think I said it's got a conditional use permit, so I thought it'd be some...
There's not any, so that's a...that's just an approval of the...of the use as requested, which is to use that shop for the purposes of his parking and working on equipment associated with the business, which would otherwise be in a residential zoning classification. But it's so far removed from other residential settings to where it's not an issue.
Okay.
There don't need to be any conditions, according to what I'm understanding, there don't need to be any conditions on this particular use.
All right.
Next thing you're gonna address, though, there will be conditions.
On this one, I mean, the man has 250, 60, whatever, 80, 90 acres. He's worked, I think, with this department well in accomplishing what we asked him to, and I...I mean, I would say if it was him or anybody else out in our end of the county, 250 acres is enough ground to park a few trucks.
Right.
But man owns his own business.
I agree.
So that's why I build the way I do about it.
Right.
No, I'm fine, I just wanted to say condition, I just wanted to be more of a slip by or something.
Okay, we have a...
I'm good.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, next item, item C, is also with respect to Mr. Rogers. This is a conditional use request relative to 621 Mount Helm Road, District 4. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Rogers has submitted a conditional use application request, requesting a review of the existing conditional use that was approved on March 7, 2011. Mr. Rogers requesting the conditional use permit be amended to allow chipping and grinding of vegetative debris for recycling. Mr. Rogers reports that he has a contract to haul wood chips to the Georgia Pacific location in Monticello. The property's located at 621 Mount Helm. It's a 15-acre parcel zoned RE1. He has removed all of the wood waste that was, y'all saw the photographs, that was on that property that had been stored improperly. That's been removed to another location, dealt with, okay? So that hearing is open. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the public hearing, I'm sorry, to the conditional use permit request made by Clifton Rogers on 621 Mount Helm. Anyone? I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. Your staff does have conditions for this use? If you'd like, Steve, do you want to list those? I don't mind doing any of that, but please...
Mr. Rogers, we are approving with these conditions, and I think that they're fair, and I think you'll work with us on them. Only material from Kip's tree service business can be brought to Mount Helm site for recycling. You can do your own, but not have this as a business to recycle other people. We don't want...it's 15 acres, and I don't want it to be more than what your business generates. Vegetative debris brought in to the site must be processed and removed from the property within 90 days, three months. You showed us you could move a whole lot more than that in less than 90 days, so I think you can handle that. There can be no burning of vegetative debris. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and I know you've probably heard that we have heard, we don't want to hear these machines or whatever running when we're trying to sleep. Firewood must be delivered, no customer pickup, and I think you understand what that is. Do you understand all those?
They can allow for their customers to pick up on the weekend, so why does that have to be crazy?
I'm not...I'm not sure about that. He might be allowing that because we don't work out there on the weekend.
Well, he was approved to sell firewood on Saturday and so, yes, conditions.
I tell you what, to speed this along, will you get with this lady, and if y'all work it out, we'll monitor it for a while and see if it works, but work with them on that, okay? And we'll address, if there's a problem, we'll address it.
Got a motion in there somewhere?
Motion. I make a motion.
With those conditions.
With those conditions.
Excellent. How long you gonna give on the firewood? On the Saturday firewood, 90 days?
Well, work that out with her office in 30 days. You can do that, can't you? I mean, y'all can come to an agreement of either we are or we're not, or Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 or so, I mean, whatever y'all work out, if it's within their rules, regulations, guidelines, if we're doing it for our neighbor, work that out with them, and let's be comfortable with all of us, all three of us be comfortable with what you come up with, okay? I'll buy this about 30 days.
I got it. And it seems to me that the conditions would be that instead of no customer pickup of firewood, that it would be customer pickup of firewood on Saturdays between the hours of 9:00 and 3:00.
Something of that.
That would be the amended condition. Is that okay?
Right.
All right, so the amended condition, last condition of no firewood is...
He's got a question.
Something, I'm gonna hold, something near, someone make talk so up, and be like, we done there, we renditioned some of my chips, but mulch to talk so long.
All right, so customer pickup of firewood or mulch, Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00. How about that? That work? All right, that would be the last condition.
We have a understanding that there won't be any more disposal of tree limbs on other people's properties, or that would be avoided of this conditional use.
Right.
Well, I hope with the chipping and approval, all that, he won't need to store anything like that anywhere else, he'll sell the chips.
What are you alluding to, whether it's Dad's property, putting stuff on his dad's stuff up?
So...
You say you want to make it included?
I don't know that it needs to be in here, and I'll tell you why, because if we're storing vegetative debris on somebody else's property and we can trace it back, that's a problem, regardless of whether it's in this or not.
Okay.
We just...we just need to monitor that, and I think Kip understands that we're just not gonna store.
Can we agree to only your hours of chipping to keep it, you know, not 8:00 to 5:00, because, you know, some people like to sleep late on the weekends and...
Well, it's Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00.
Is that what it is?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00.
Just be on Saturday, won't be any chipping.
This ain't a working neighborhood, these people don't work.
See, I don't think 9:00 is fair.
I mean, he's got a business to run, and, you know, you probably gonna get started at 9:00.
I agree.
No. In fact, he probably would have chipped at 7:00.
All right.
So we have...
So is that it?
Motion.
We have...do we have a motion on the table?
Motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Gaines to approve this with these conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item D is a continuation of the public hearing on the Sonny Beatty conditional use permit at 105 Jack's Place. You recall, Daniel, we asked for a little more time to do some checking on that.
Hey, before y'all leave, I thank y'all for working with us on getting that cleaned up in a timely manner.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will reopen that public hearing. Mr. Beatty is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a 2,715 square foot convenience store on the southwest corner of Old Fannin Road, Jack's Place. It's a .65-acre parcel zoned C2. Mr. Beatty's parents own the property. They obtained a building permit to construct the convenience store on the property before zoning was adopted, but they never started construction. Mr. Beatty wants to see if he can be approved for this use before he purchases the property. If approved, he will have to come back for a site plan architectural review before a building permit is issued, this District 2 property. So we will open that public hearing again. I'll ask again if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Sonny Beatty conditional use permit, 105 Jack's Place, District 2. Anyone? Gentlemen, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to recommend approval.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And this is basically just approving, so he'll know, and then he'll move forward anyway.
He's got much, much more to do.
Yeah, he got a lot of other things to do.
Buster over there.
Okay, item E under my section is a discussion of the...of a drainage ditch in residential subdivision located District 3, and a potential request for assistance from a local water association. This has to do with the Live Oak subdivision. The Greenfield Water Association has gone in and conducted at least a preliminary review, I would say, of their situation and what they have found, and by the way, this information is coming from the attorney representing the water association, Mr. Doug Messier, and I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Messier about this situation. What he tells me is that the water association is finding infiltration from...into their water system from this ditch, the sedimentation from the ditch, and it results from the fact that there is standing and free-flowing water getting into their sanitary sewer. And so this is an issue that they have to face and address. A water association, similarly to a board of supervisors, has jurisdiction over areas A water association, similarly to a board of supervisors, has jurisdiction over areas where they have their systems in place, including this subdivision development. And they recognize that something needs to be done, or there's going to be a fairly significant impact cost wise on their system. They have, again, preliminarily reviewed it, and what they have come to the conclusion is that something's got to be done with the ditch in order to address this infiltration problem.
Is this the same ditch we've been talking about before?
It's the same ditch. Yes, sir.
Oh, it has some debris in it or vegetable.
Yes, sir.
It's not so much debris, it's just been allowed to grow up. And since our last conversation a couple of months ago, the HOA has acquired the larger parcel, about 16 acres. The second parcel, which is about seven acres, is still owned by the development company, and it's their desire to try to get that at a tax sale in August, so they'll have total ownership of the, the two properties there. We had looked at it back before Dale had left and Mike had gone out there with a, with a guy, and they'd come up with a preliminary number just from the board standpoint, just the county doing it, somewhere between $45,000 to $50,000. Since Greenfield has shown interest in wanting to do something, and I've expressed our interest to try to help them in some way, I would like to get some kind of level of indication that maybe we participate financially in some form or fashion, let them play the lead person on the, on the cleanup. And kind of, you know, at the end of the day, we all agreed to a scope, we all agreed, okay, this is going to be about this much money, and the county's going to come up and do this part of that money and get this thing done on a one-time basis. And then now the homeowners association group has agreed to take over the ditch once we get it to a palatable condition where they can take it over and maintain it.
Let me piece this together for you. The water association through its board is, has either already, I'm not sure about what their meeting schedule is, but the plan is that their board either has or will make a finding on the record that there is impact and danger to their systems, and that they are exercising jurisdiction over this area, including the ditch, which converts that then from a private property problem to a matter that can be addressed by the water association. Under Mississippi law, a board of supervisors is eligible and is authorized to enter into contract with private water associations for the purpose of affecting a public purpose. So, Mr. Mar, to Mr. Morris's request, he is suggesting that we enter into a contract with the water association that would allow the county then to participate in some manner in this project. Water Association is telling us through its representative, they do not have the capacity to deal fully with this situation. They need help.
Have we seen any kind of financial statement? They're public, and they're audited every year.
Actually.
Some of these have $4,500,000.
But let's go back up to what we, what got everybody's attention to begin with is the water got on the streets too. So we're talking about preventing not only our streets from deteriorating, but also the infiltration in their things. That's why I've agreed or asking to help that, because we also benefit from doing this as a result of keeping the water off the streets. It's not just a pure assistance to the sewer lines, system that they got.
Does Greenfield have a well for providing water and a sewage system under the same umbrella as their water association? Because you're talking about their sewer, and then, but we're saying water association.
I understand that the developer is the installer of the sewer.
They're separate then.
Yes, sir.
Because you're saying Greenfield's sewer system. It's not the water.
It is Greenfield. Greenfield, Greenfield Water Association owns the sewer lines out in that area, and they, and this is part of West Rankin. They turn around and they sell it to Pearl, and Pearl moves it on through their lines down to West Rankin.
The water association then manages the sewage.
And the sewer, they own the sewer lines and manage that area down there, those sewer lines.
Yeah. And I wanted to be, I'm trying to be as careful as I can about what I know and what I, I don't know, Steve. What's not clear to me is whether Greenfield actually installed the, the portion of the sewer system that is affected by this ditch or accepted it as a part of the sewer from the developer. I, I think that's probably what happened here.
That's typically, they do construction plans, correct, from that law, Mr. Parker? He's not paying attention. The developer puts it in subject to the guidelines spelled out by the water association. The water association goes in and inspects it and takes it over once the, once there has been approved installation.
So I want to be real careful about not misunderstanding your question. I, I appreciate your question to be the sewer infrastructure that was installed by Greenfield, and I, I just don't know exactly where that is in relation to this particular problem. But, but they have jurisdiction over all of it, and they are expressing concern about infiltration into their systems. I take it to be sewer because it's primarily, that's where the water is headed. I don't know that there's any infiltration in their actual wells for purposes of water delivery, but, but there may be.
It would be a lot worse to have contaminated water in your drinking well than in your sewer water.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, I know, we, in fact, Mr. Parker and several people looked at it, same situation. They had to wind up put a riser to bring it up because of, in the big rains, and there was nothing to be done there. Same thing, it was getting into their sewer system. So they wound up having to build a riser to raise it up above the water problem. Because, I mean, I don't.
I'm not sure all, what all is going to be required to formally address this. I think we're on the front end of trying to figure out exactly what has to be done.
I think all right now is just, is get the ditch cleaned up. The area where they can, you know, they grub it, can see what's there. I don't think they're talking about any extension. You're right. If they, if that doesn't solve it, then yet at some point they'll have to raise the extension of the manhole to prevent water from infiltrating the system. But right now, we're looking strictly just on the ground, you know, grass and trees, to see if something can be accomplished.
Well, this only happened in this big unusual rain.
Yeah.
Bob, you're talking about just cleaning it up just one time?
Yeah, one time shot, and HOA takes it over, and we're done with that part.
Just like in the reservoir east.
Yeah, that's the only problem.
I got a solution. They are determined to do this, and when I won't stop, then I would suggest that we have our courts pay to have this order to be done. That way, we can recoup that off of our taxes at the end of the year. So when the HOA pays their taxes, they can settle up that bill at that time. And that way, they won't be looking Rankin County every time they get ready to cut the grass out there to get it done.
I think the reason they're looking to help is they don't have the funds to do this one-time cleanups. I'm not really sure what, other than the fact that it's going to go back and create, they're not going to pay it, and then it just goes back and starts, goes back to the stage, nobody touches it again, and then three years from now, we're back here doing this again.
Well, that kind of begs the difference from what you were saying before, that they were saying, we do it once, they'll take care of it from here on in.
That's right. I mean, if they do, if we do it, then we do. I mean, I can't, I won't come back again, you know, we got it on tape, you know, I mean.
That's not what, I don't think that's the issue. His issue is, is going to be, this could easily become an ongoing problem. I mean, obviously, Daniel's got some issues, certain situations, and the problem you're going to run into is explaining it to the next one. Well, yours is not quite the same. Well, it is too. You know, I mean, in their eyes, it is the same. It's kind of hard to pick and choose and say, wow, this one isn't as important as this one. Because they let it grow up, and it's on private property, and then the same problem in some of these others, like yours, yours, and, and I got some too. It's that common ground, but it's private property, so I don't know.
But to me, it gets.
I don't know how we're going to draw the line.
The whole point is, it's on the city streets, you know, at some point.
County.
Let it, county streets are, we just let it keep going, and then deteriorate the streets, I mean, to the point where then we keep repairing the streets.
I don't, I hadn't heard from anybody tell me, because I'm wondering if that's, it's just this big rains, that we did have some unusual rains. We all got, have been getting bombarded with phone calls, and it all boils down to this unusual rain we had. Some people recognize it, a few don't.
I think with me, that this is something that sooner or later, we're all going to have to address, whether it's in a subdivision with drainage problems here or there. I would like for us to really get serious about how we're going to do this countywide. We either are or we're not, and.
Well, let me go a little further. Even in your, in the, I can think of some where the, we got a big cover goes through there. Our area handles it well, but just downstream, it's the same situation in that it's flooding our backyards, it's flooding, taking out this thing. What you're talking about, taking the fence out, y'all need to do something. Well, we, we have ours opened up as far as we can reach it, and it's not going to be a stopping point. It's the, was it Stone Brook there, Florence? They claim that that ditch, we need to clean a portion of our ditch out would alleviate their problem. Well, if we clean that out, it just throws more water on people downstream, so there's no end to it.
I know we can fix it. We got 32 potholes. Man's square water sinkholes in people's subdivisions, and just one subdivision alone. 32 opportunities for some kid to come along and break their leg.
So I mean, where are you going to stop?
Well, I just soon start right there, but.
Well, I mean, where are you going to find the funds to do it? That's all private property. We all address and face that, sympathize with it, but I don't, I don't know where, unless you have some type of taxing district.
We can dance around it all day long. We gonna have to put a taxing district on, pay for it. No question about it.
Well, that's going to be for another discussion. That's going to be for another discussion because it's not going to be fair for.
Well, it's probably too close to election to even think about it now, but I, I, I don't know how else to get it done, though.
We're about as far away from election as we can get.
I'm not going to say that.
Not really.
It ain't going to never be far enough.
What about, what about this? What if, because I mean, the bottom line gets back to our participation is, is the, what I tell folks is the deterioration of streets. At some point, we let the water keep staying on the streets, we're going to end up paying for it anyway, because we'll have to go out there and redo the streets and do that. So I mean, I appreciate the fact, I got one guy who's been in my ear about water getting up in his backyard and stuff like that, and you're right, there's just nothing we can do about that. Now, if it impacts the county infrastructure, then there's an opportunity to do something, whether we choose to do it, as of course, this board's decision. Mr. Gaines here mentioned maybe there's an opportunity that maybe we can participate in in kind with, you know, some bush hogs that we've got. I don't know. But I'll, I'll ask this maybe, is maybe, let me go back to the Greenfield Water Board and get them to come up with a scope, and let's lay it out there and see, and then I'll get with Derek and see if there's some opportunities maybe that we can do in kind for that, and we'll bring it back to the board maybe by the July 5th meeting and do that.
How big is the vegetation?
Well, maybe when we.
Have you seen it? How big?
Look and see, like, what's further downstream, because I understand, I spent an hour on the phone with somebody last week when I'd much rather been doing something else, but they were telling me that even after we cut this off, we're still going to end up having a roadblock at the prison because they have some kind of huge levee there that is holding all the water up, where they got all kind of vegetation that's holding all the water.
There is no doubt there's more stuff downstream, but let's talk Richmond Creek if you want to do something downstream.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and that's what I mean. You, there's not a, everybody sees that this is the problem, but they don't go further on down. And once you start, you don't, there's nowhere to stop. I mean, anywhere you go, that's the same situation. So I, I don't know what the answer is. I think your, your idea of getting a scope and something, I think that's.
I'll work towards that end, and we'll come up with something more definitive and lay it out there, exactly what we're willing to do, what Greenfield's willing to do. And try, maybe do some in-kind work. And just for the record, I agree with Jay, we're going to have to come up with this drainage district either in the next 12 to 24 months, because it's just not going to get any better on its own.
If I can point one thing out about that particular discussion, just to keep in the forefront of your mind, if and when the board makes a decision to look at a drainage district which has taxing charge, the millage impact will not be visited upon taxpayers until January 1 of the following year. And the financial impact of that assessment will not be felt until well into 20, the next year after that. If you put a rate on today, the first effect of that will be after the first of the year of 17 as to the landowner and as to county coffers December of 2018.
Unless we would be like, possibly take some existing millage and transfer, you know, like a mill from our road.
I think the point is, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that further, further delaying, when we talk about kicking a can down the road, this is a huge kick, and the can goes a long way.
That woke Derek up.
Okay.
I'll work, I'll work towards getting scope lined up for July 5th meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, good deal. Another thing, Bob, how big is the vegetation? Have you seen it? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's just kind of nice trees. It's 25 acres total is, is the whole thing, so it's, it's, I'm not a landscaper per se, you know, so I can't really get into the details, but.
John, you might want to miss the next meeting.
All right, okay.
So as I appreciate it, we're going to work with the water association, who is making this request to develop a scope of work and come back and report July 5th meeting.
I thought we were just going to let them come up with something. I didn't know we were working with them.
Well, I'm going to work with them. I say, I'm going to go out there and make sure it gets done. Because I want to understand what the scope is, so when y'all ask questions, I can respond in kind.
Look at that downstream situation, that is.
Well, the problem is down there, it's all state property. Once you leave that subdivision, you pick up state property, and you can be rest assured, we're going to get no help from the state.
I'm just saying, though, if you do this, is it going to really do anything?
It's going, it'll help solve, the big rains, it'll help solve, you know.
Maybe, yeah. You may have to have some type of drainage, I guess, impact to see if it's going to do it. We had to do the same thing in that Arcadia deal. They had to do independent, their own, they had their own engineer go in and, and see actually what this would do, whether it would help or not. So, and they came up with a plan, and their, their response were anything downstream.
Maybe we could find an engineer work with you a little bit, Bob. I will, but it's damn expensive, man. I agree.
Item F, quickly. Consideration of and potential action to approve an amendment to our existing food service contract between Sheriff and Valley Foods to provide a program of additional meal service of benefits for Rankin County inmates at the sole cost of family members of inmates. There's no cost to Rankin County. There, the amendment itself, which is a one-pager, is attached to your agenda. Very small item of impact. What is being offered is that if families of inmates desire to have an enhanced food program for their relative that is incarcerated, they can choose to do that at their cost. There is an additional item that allows for Valley to take 20% of the impact of those revenues and use that for the benefit of all of the inmates, as I appreciate this. Is that what you understand, Sheriff? So that's, that's all you're being asked to do, is just that one amendment, two parts to the existing contract.
Brian, if any of my family members ask for that over there, we're not paying. Sorry?
So moved.
Brian, is there any truth to what's been talked about recently that they're going to do away with the capabilities of using inmate labor for cooking meals?
I haven't heard that. Nobody's contacted me about that. That might be something on the state level, federal level.
You haven't heard yet?
Well, we watch ours. I mean, everybody in there cooking, we do, they have a complete physical and a hip, a thigh, a stairs, all this stuff to make sure.
Okay, yeah, food tastes good.
Sounds good.
Let's move on.
So moved.
Take action on?
Do we have any further business?
Do we need to take action on?
Take action.
Make a motion?
Yes, yes, we do need a motion on that.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Now, Bob is on, I, I make a motion, we don't do anything in that district.
Well, it's not early when everybody starts laughing after all of the work.
We'll tell you later.
You think long, come back.
You ready for me?
Let's all laugh when he comes back in.
The first item I have this morning is authority to pay David Moore Jr. for Family Master Services for the month of May, and authority to issue the check in the amount of $2,500.
Nice.
Most by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Now, we all laugh. Now, we gonna laugh when he comes back in. Now, we laughing.
The next item I have is a request from the election commissioners for consideration of an additional five days. For the revision of the voter registration books and the revision of poll books due to the days they've dedicated to the, uh, consideration of new election equipment. This is allowable by statute for the revision of the poll books, but it is, um, mandatory that the board approves that additional five days.
All that work, that study they did prior to, uh, the demos we set up?
Yeah.
Those five days that they set aside?
Well, the five days, they have to be for voter registration books and for the revision.
They've been doing revisions, but.
But they were dedicating that time. So, they're asking for an additional five days to do the revision of poll books.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay.
Are y'all motion to approve it, I'm guessing?
Yes.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines to approve. Second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
That's all I have under my section.
Any executive?
Well, first of all.
Additional business?
Derek's on there, I think.
We got it, addition. Okay.
Derek's, they have to make it.
All right.
Just real quick, this has to do with a, um, bridge located on Leesburg Road. Uh, Mr. Gaines brought to the attention of the road department. A bridge located on Leesburg Road. Uh, Mr. Parker, uh, and the road department went out and inspected the bridge. Uh, based on Mr. Parker's recommendation, we closed the bridge. Uh, after consulting with Mr. Slay, I need board action to continue to have the bridge closed until we can get it repaired. Uh, good news is we still are under contract with SS Dragline and we talked to him this morning. When he completes the Lewis Street Bridge, he can move on over to Leesburg Bridge and replace that deck fairly easy before July first, when that contract runs out. And we anticipate the bridge being closed for two more weeks.
Is that a pound bridge?
Yes.
Sectional?
Yeah, just one section. It's a pretty short bridge.
Yeah, it won't take him long.
You said they'll be able to go in there in July. Is that right? Do you think maybe July?
We, after speaking with him this morning, it's of the utmost importance that he get it complete before July first, cause that's when that contract. He, um, he reassured us that when he got done with the Lewis Street Bridge, he would move over there and he felt confident he could get that complete before July first.
All right, um, I make a motion that we keep it closed for another two weeks and.
Need to add it to the agenda first.
Need to add it to the agenda first.
It's on there, it's just not.
Is it?
It's, uh.
Very changed at the last minute.
Uh, I'm hearing a voice in back here somewhere saying it is on there. So, I make a motion that we close it for another two weeks.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrow to close the bridge for another two weeks. Um, do we have, is this one where we need to declare it an emergency repair? So, we don't have to go through the whole bid process?
We won't have to go through.
We won't, we, we currently have a contract.
SNS Dragline is the one that would be doing it. We already, we're under contract with them.
Okay, all right.
Another thing on that same bridge, I mean, on that, I mean, where they are, as soon as they finish, so they could, they get there quicker than. I mean, that's what I'm saying, they gonna move there as soon as they finish, they all right.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so.
All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other business?
Under additional business, we have discussion, potential action of an appointment of Rankin County Division's Divisional Board Manager of Jackson Municipal Airport.
Mr. President, I want to thank all those folks out there in the great county of Rankin County for sending their resumes and their interest in this thing. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Chance Carter. Who is the president of the Rankin County Division for Community Bank Shares in Mississippi as our representative for the airport board.
Okay.
We need a motion, I second it.
Have a motion by Ms. Mar, second by Mr. Morrow, I mean, Ms. Mar. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I wanna make a couple of comments or, or discussion on that same side of, as far as the overall applications on all this. The ones we've received, how many, how many have you received, Laurel, on that? Do you know?
It's like four.
Four? Can you tell me who those are?
Yes, uh, Chance Carter, Philip Land. William Trey Jones, I'm sorry, five. Justin Bernard and Baxter Burns.
One of the comments I wanna make on the same side of that is, one of the apps in that group there is Baxter Burns, who's, uh, one of the vice presidents of Ergon right there. Has a good depth of knowledge of that same area. So, uh, my support is in, in Baxter on that side of that. So, but that's just in the general discussion side. But is there any other names we wanna discuss other than the one? Anyone?
I personally don't. I, I kinda think that, uh. Whenever this all came out with, we were looking for somebody with some MDA background experience and some business experience. And I, I thought he put the bill pretty strong.
Okay, when you say he?
I was talking about Chance Carter.
I don't know when, I guess that's kinda, I mean, I've given.
Yeah, that does come for you, huh?
I, I know several of these people and I think they would all be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
I don't think we can roll with any of them, honestly.
I mean, I think every, the ones that I've met and talked to, oh, Justin Minard, I know him well and he's a pilot. Uh, I would throw his name out there and recommend him. But I'm not stupid. I already see three votes. I don't wanna.
And you have the same thing with Philip Land. I mean, he, he's a pilot as well. You know, the same side.
I just, uh, I don't, I mean, I don't think it would help my guy for me to put his name out there and him get voted down. So, I'm not gonna put it out there. And, and I do think that Chance would make a, a good candidate also.
Yeah. So, we are.
I'm like you, I think everybody that has, that applied, I mean, we got a, it's really, to me, it was like flip a coin.
Yeah, it's hard.
It, it was a draw straws. It was three or four, but I mean, it's hard to draw.
Yeah.
Which is a good problem.
Yep.
It's really good that we felt like we had that quality. But there again, another thing too, you can remember, we are making this appointment. So, if it doesn't work out, I guess we can unappoint it too.
Well.
It'll work out.
I think so too. I think so. But like I said, I think we're fortunate to have these choices.
This person is about to undertake some heat that it necessarily, you know, it comes. You know, pretty common, a pretty high bill, you know, all the ridicule, they gonna get over this. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's my only thing. I, I've never seen his resume. I've never seen his name, never heard his name till today. So, I don't know who he is. So.
Yeah.
That's why, when we vote, we vote, but.
Yeah.
I don't know who he is, so.
He's, he is, I mean, he, he's a stand-up guy, no, no doubt about it.
And, and I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, I don't know him.
He will represent us well. Uh, I'm not, I'm not ashamed to vote for him. I just, the other guy lives in my district and supported me, so. I'm just being honest with you and, and he's a pilot.
Okay.
All right, yeah, we got a motion.
Any other discussions? We got a motion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, aye. We, we have, uh, four ayes and one no. Now, do we have any other business?
We have a little bit further discussion on the page.
You know how close we were at ten o'clock to being able to get out of here?
Can't do it.
Yeah, because I'm back, you know?
Tell them, tell them what.
You know, while I was out of town, I got a picture sent to me of how quick we got out of here, you know?
Right, certainly not.
On the paging system that had been presented to us, um, that's two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. We had looked at the savings we were going to get off of the maintenance agreement that we currently have. Would be about a hundred and fifty thousand that we're gonna save this year. The maintenance agreement was only paid in October and November, rested and budgeted. Um, we can apply this toward it, which leaves there again about the same amount, about a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, to pay this off. Um, it's gonna take about ninety days. So, right now, if they were to start, they're doing this in ninety days, they probably wouldn't even hit this budget. So, we could either pay a portion of it. Next year, I can worry about the leasing then, if that so chooses, or if we pull enough money back in, you might just go ahead and pay for it.
I don't think that's the same maintenance.
Huh?
So, this was the maintenance agreement on the towers when we went to the Missland system.
Yeah.
We only paid.
You think that's going away?
Yes, before dish next year it will, or two years, we have a maintenance agreement folded into that contract.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we kinda held up on this.
The savings and if we started it now and whatever money we pulled back in, we could probably just pay for it in October, November, whenever the bill comes due. And save any finance charge. Although I did get an estimate from Trustmark and it would be below two point five oh and this was, uh, three point nine three.
Yeah.
So, we'll be able to get a much better local if that's the way we choose to go.
Okay, did you ask community? Cause I think they're very.
No, and I, I can do that for, just a quick response. I just sent it out to Trustmark, but I can get several.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good thing to get some quotes.
Yeah.
Put it out there, but.
If we're gonna go that route, we might not have to.
No, right, but yeah. But that money savings was, uh, that we had out there that.
But the paging system, just like what we have been presented with. This same board was presented with the same thing several years ago and it was at the time, the top of the line. We were buying the best. This was gonna fix it all. And so.
And, and, but that's not what I was being told on that. I was told the previous board didn't take the, they took a midline option of it. It wasn't the best.
Well, that was not true at all. No, the only thing that can save them is the fact we don't have video from that far back. So.
Saves one somebody, you know?
Yeah.
I'm with you either way. I mean, regardless. That's water on the bridge.
We're, we're buying the, the best equipment we know how to buy to keep it all up and running. And, I mean, since you've been here, have we purchased anything that is?
In the last six months, it's been pretty good.
Right, so of course you weren't here for the Motorola stuff, but even then, I mean, you know, we, we've never went cheap on trying to buy equipment. So.
Right.
It just is.
And if we.
Here it is, four years later.
Saying that the analog stuff was bad. The pager stuff?
Yeah.
That's bad, I mean, but that's.
If we, if we did, we didn't knowingly or by choice.
Yeah.
Pick the.
You need.
I, I believe that. I totally believe that.
Are we needing the new action to add it today or are we bringing it back to the next session?
Well, I like the idea of taking this refund money and rolling it back in as a payment. I mean, it, it makes it to where, uh. We don't take that money and it dissolves somewhere else and we're already ahead of the game with our first payment.
But too, will this expedite getting them going quicker?
So, can I have a motion to add this item to the agenda?
I, I think we're gonna add.
Motion by Mr. Mar, second by Mr. Gaines and add this item to the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. To have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Mar, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
I make a motion regarding executive session.
No, I got one thing I want.
The chair has something he would like to say.
Go, well, go ahead, Chair.
Friday they called and said that if I unwrap my vehicle, that mine was ready. And you'll be able to sell it because I have to, I have a purchase order for the vehicle. Two years ago on the first start of this, they were gonna charge me ten thousand dollars for, I'll pay for that drug. So, I'm gonna go ahead and do a purchase order today for ten thousand dollars for the entire, uh, surplus property. But I have a Ford Mercury service lined up to go pick it up. Don't I need to get, get y'all to approve me to hire them?
I thought we already did.
I thought we already did all that.
I thought we already approved that.
Oh, that was the move, move and hold.
That was, uh, on the buildings.
That was Bob's idea to bring this.
Yeah. I take credit.
He said, I was trying to go get it. You have a lot more trailer, we need to tell him everything. He said, I was trying to go get it. I just hired, I wanna hire him and he's already called, checked on the permits and everything. And he can go get it next week whenever they call and tell him the, the, the time to come.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Let's add that.
Need to add, make a motion, add the agenda.
All right, add it and then I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, added by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross to purchase or, uh, add this item to the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it, now.
So, when they do this, he just gives me a bill and I just submit it up.
We got, now we got, make a motion.
Make a motion by Mr. Gaines to approve going to get it second by Mr. Gaines, I mean, Cross. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
I got just something, okay. I got something right quick I wanna, uh, bring up. And I talked to Derek some over the weekend. It's got to do with this concrete, uh, concrete pipe and stuff we're putting in. I, I understand we got some quotes and it's, it's, it's cheaper than metal and everything. But, and sometimes, and time-wise, there's, uh, it's, it takes a little more time to put it in in some cases. But my biggest concern is when we, we're having to, we're putting, trying to put some of this big pipe in places. That there's not a need to have it there. And another thing, we don't have equipment to handle that big pipe. So, we're having to rent equipment, uh, machine to put that in. And it takes way longer to put it in. And my question I had too was if you're gonna open up, cut a hole. You're putting a pipe in six foot or bigger. Uh, you're gonna open, cut that road, put in, or you have, and you start putting joints in, eight foot joints, what you had to put in on your concrete pipe. There's several questions, several things that bother me about that. First off, we got, we, we, if we can't handle the equipment we have, I think we're going too big. We gotta go rent equipment or have something like that. The second thing is when you open, cut a hole, road that big, unless you cut it way back, are, are you gonna have to have a trench box?
I can't think of an instance right now where we would put concrete on a bigger five foot. We would definitely use the aluminized or the, the metal pipe to do that.
Well, then why are we getting a big machine? Cause our machines won't handle the pipe.
Our machines will not handle a pipe. We've already tested out a bucket.
What size pipe?
Two inches, as large as our pipe will handle right now. And we have a project going down. Uh, Bob's district right now, we do have some pipe larger than that and we needed, uh, we have a really big problem with the cover of our pipe in this county. If you look at the manufacturer specifications, most all the pipe needs eighteen to twenty-four inches. That's why a lot of our pipe is failing in this county because it was not covered properly. Put concrete in, you don't have to worry about covering it all. Um, there are cases with the metal pipe where you can buy a heavier gauge or a, uh, bigger pour gauge. But a lot of times, that may be as much as, you know, ten to twenty dollars more, uh, per linear foot on the concrete pipe. So, it's always gonna be a case by case situation. Now, moving forward, it's gonna be, I would say, you know, concrete pipe is not gonna be in the majority of the pipe that we put in this county. It's gonna be the aluminized pipe. Before I was appointed road manager, I was the impression that nobody even was aware of the aluminized pipe. The aluminized pipe lasts fifty years. We have pipe in this county, for instance, down on Clearfoot Road. Pipe's completely rotted out. The street was overlaying the last four to five years. We're gonna have to go in there and tear that road up. It's never gonna look like it was. There was probably three, four hundred thousand dollars spent overlaying that road. So, it just makes good business sense to me to put pipe in the road, whether that be concrete in some cases or the aluminized pipe. It's cheaper, it lasts longer. It just makes better sense and it saves money too.
Well, wait a minute. When you're talking about that pipe that was there. It didn't deteriorate in the last four or five years. It was just not replaced back when the road was overlaying. It didn't deteriorate in four or five years.
Yeah, it sounded like some poor workman's job probably during that period of time.
Well, I mean, it, it was just, that pipe wasn't replaced, but it didn't look to need to be replaced. That's all it was. It, no pipe deteriorated. It'd be a rare deal for deteriorating.
There are cases, we actually have a lot of pipes now sitting on the yard right now that all the tar is falling off. You get in some, uh, areas where, uh, the pipe down on Clearfoot Road, there is some farming going on there. So, you know, there could be some fertilizers that could eat that pipe up at a pretty rapid rate.
I think if you look back, I don't think you're gonna find that pipe to put in four years ago and, and it didn't last for four years. Uh, but my biggest thing is if we can't handle it, we don't need to be putting it in.
I agree. And to me, it's a safety issue too.
Then why would we rent the machine?
We rent the machine because where we're at the county for two reasons. We had some cleaning up that we needed to do around the county maintenance facility down there. And also, we needed, it makes sense to go ahead and, and put the county, uh, speaking with Bob, we were putting concrete in down there on County Line Road. That's a. Heavily traveled road and there's little to no cover on that road and we can't, I can't, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna go against man. Speaking with Bob, we were putting concrete in down there on County Line Road, that's a heavily traveled road, and there's little to no cover on that road, and we can't, I can't, I would, I'm not gonna go against manufacturer's specifications on bedding the pipe, it's only got six inches of cover on it.
Mr. Parker, have you looked at that? That's usually where our engineer comes involved in some of that. Okay, I mean, concrete pipe on a, big concrete pipe on a rural road, I mean, you put a, you put a eighty-inch one on Henry Bird. We cut it out, rolled, put it, rolled it right in there, put it there, that pipe, if I'd been there, well, I don't ever remember it not being there, so, we had to blow out, put that one in there. I mean, if we're getting thirty-five years out of one, that's great, if you're getting fifty, I mean, if you got fifty, chances are the road may not be there.
Right.
May not be there that time, I mean, thirty-five years, some of us won't ever see it.
And I want to make sure for the record, we will always keep plenty of metal pipe in for emergency situations, because it does take longer.
Well, I just wanna guess, I don't understand why we're going with the large concrete pipe, then, larger than we can handle.
Cover, it makes for, it just makes better sense for us to have infrastructure that lasts a hundred years, or alumina pipe that lasts fifty years.
If we're gonna have to rent a machine, I'm against renting a machine, if we can't handle the equipment we have, I'm against that.
I went back and looked at the two thousand fifteen budget, and two thousand fifteen, the road department spent twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars on the rental of heavy equipment for road repair. And in two thousand sixteen, we've spent just a little over eight thousand, so we really only spent less than a third of what we spent before I got here, so we haven't come anywhere near that.
Is that rental and renting special equipment, or renting that we have a, like a rent-purchase type deal, kinda like we?
No, it was rental of a, I think it was a Cat, Cat three-twenty, Cat five-twenty-nine or something. Yeah, so we haven't spent anywhere near what we spent before we got here.
Well, I understand, I'm just saying, I just thought it was worth, need to be discussed, and because if we can't handle it, we don't need to be putting it in the roads, in these roads. These rural, rural community roads, I understand if it's state aid, I understand if it's a road where it's required. But rural roads, if we can't, I mean, an eighty-inch pipe is a large steel pipe. And you put that in, you put a fifty-something inch in Arcadia, we could handle that, we could handle those, and we're not having to go rent equipment to put a piece of pipe in. Put the sections, and sections, eight-foot sections, so you start honing them together, and there's another thing, movement of the, of the property, of the ground, there's a lot of places where they start moving, you're only honing it in about four inches. So you have some movement, where the concrete, those joints, you got all those joints in there, where the steel has some flexibility, because it'll, it'll, can flex some with it. So I know there's some places that they've now gone back to the steel because of the movement of the concrete, it creates some problems for them.
And we have consulted with Mr. Parker about bedding this concrete pipe, and we are bedding it according to what his recommendations are, so we have consulted with him.
Anyway, I just started to record, I'm not on board for renting equipment if we can't, if we can't handle a piece of pipe, so, I think that's.
Since you're going, I'll go on, I'm on the record in supporting Mr. Milton, he's getting hired to do this job, and letting him do it, you know, so.
He's also spending our money.
That's right, but he.
That's right, you put a concrete pipe on a rural road, large concrete pipe on a rural road.
I would like to also say that, I, I looked at the POs, and we have saved almost ten thousand dollars this year by ordering concrete over the metal pipe that we previously ordered, so.
And I, I might agree with you on the small, when you start ordering the large, and the cost it's gonna be putting it in, I don't see that.
Yes, sir, and I can say that, you know, five foot or bigger, we are gonna look to the aluminized pipe to put it in as opposed to the concrete, because I agree, we do not, our, I think it's John Deere, it's roughly a hundred-and-sixty horsepower, our ceiling is forty-two inches.
Sounds to me like we all went in, like he's using the smaller concrete for the smaller ones, and we're gonna use aluminized for the bigger stuff.
Well, you just, well, you, yeah, but you're not, you're not in all cases, I'm telling you, you're not. If you got to rent a piece of equipment, you're not using it. And, and another thing, when you have to, some of that, you have to go deeper to get that cover, and then you're down below the grade of your ditch. Like an eight, even an eighteen, if you put an eighteen in, in some places, you'd have to go down lower to get the cover on top, so then you're putting the bottom of your pipe below the grade of your ditch.
Yes, sir, if anything, we're going there and we're actually fixing the inverts of these pipes, because a lot of them are just, they're not draining properly. So when we go back in and put a pipe, we're actually putting a level on those pipes, and if anything, we're improving the drainage of those pipes, because they are not in good shape when we get there.
Okay. Still renting machines, but my point is.
I make a motion regarding executive session, if we're done with other business.
Are you three discussing?
Yeah, I just wanted it out there, because this is gonna be a problem.
Alright, well, we don't, we don't, we don't want problems, so, we got a motion by Mr. Morrow, and second by Mr. Gaines, to discuss the need going to executive session, all in favor say aye? Ayes have it. Really? Are you serious?
Up until your time.
I thought that was the same thing. So he's like, he's your chief, anyway.
I just read on there.
He's staying there for a business over here.
Hey, I just read, man, I just.
Come on, I thought I got something special.
I swap, hey, I swap packages. I got the presents, man.
Alright, so we'll come back.
Team waits to everything. At least they, they, they bring it in. Oyster on the half shell, locator.
It's nice.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Hey, did you get that email I sent you about that, were you calling on that, or who would need to talk to? Perfect, and can we get somebody to call that lady back, and just explain to us what's going on?
I think she's got a plan on doing that, but I will.
Litigation and personnel. I make a motion regarding executive session for litigation and personnel.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Cross, to discuss litigation and personnel, all in favor say aye? Ayes have it. Alright, we are in executive session.